Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 2, 2013. At 6:30 PM, we're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we begin our agenda, I have a brief announcement. I'm saddened to report the passing of Jerome K. Foal. Jerry, as he was more affectionately known, had a long career as a journalist before he came to Palm Coast, where he was employed by ITT as Vice President for Public Relations. Several years after his retirement from ITT, Jerry worked with a Citizens Committee promoting the incorporation of Palm Coast as a city. As a result of his outstanding work on this committee, Jerry was elected to the very first Palm Coast City Council, serving with Mayor Jim Canfield and Council members Bill Vanny, Jim Holland, and Ralph Carter. Throughout his years in Palm Coast, Jerry was known as an animal lover, an ardent environmentalist, and a staunch supporter of the cultural arts. Jerry will be missed by all of us who knew him. Please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of Jerry Foal. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Nettles?
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember DiLorenzo?
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the March 19 City Council meeting and the March 26 City Council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval? Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. Mr. McGuire? And receiving the proclamation, Shelley Elsmore? Come on up.
We tried to get Peter Fonda, but couldn't do it. Okay. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of efficient transportation and recreation for more than 750,000 people in Florida, and whereas it is important that the drivers of all vehicles be aware of one another and learn to share the road and practice courtesy, and whereas motorcycles provide a means of transportation that uses fewer resources, causes less wear and tear on public roadways, and increases available parking areas, and whereas it is especially important that the citizens of Florida be aware of motorcycles on the streets and highways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas the American bikers aim toward education, abate of Florida, vintage chapter representing the cities of Palm Coast, Pinellas, Flagler Beach, St. Augustine, and St. Augustine Beach, as well as unincorporated areas within the counties of Flagler and St. Johns, is actively promoting the safe operation, increased rider training, and increased motorist awareness of motorcycles, and whereas it is important to recognize a need for awareness on the part of all drivers, especially with regard to sharing the road with motorcycles, and to honor motorcyclists' many contributions to the communities in which they live and ride. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of May, 2013, be officially designated as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the City of Palm Coast. Sign the second day of April, 2013, John Nettles, Mayor.
You accepting for the abate?
Actually, I'd like our president to...
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
You bet. Care to...
Where's the cow?
One, two, three.
Inside joke.
I wonder how you get all those buttons, those badges there?
Mayor, councilmembers, I want to thank you for once again joining us in proclaiming Month of May Motorcycle Safety Awareness. It's been a deadly year for bikers this year. A lot of them are young kids. Not only are we the fourth-largest motorcycle rights organization, but we have a motorcycle safety awareness program. We will come to any civic, business, school, free of charge, 30-minute presentation on being aware for motorcycle safety and rider awareness. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Agenda item number three, proclamation recognizing the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Mr. Lewis, receiving the proclamation, Arnold Anderson?
How are you? Good. Whereas Florida's future prosperity depends on nurturing the healthy development of millions of children currently living, learning, and growing within our state's diverse communities, and whereas Palm Coast has a responsibility to reinforce state programs that support the health and well-being of every child in our community by participating with youth-focused organizations to ensure a bright, peaceful, prosperous future of our children, and whereas during the month of April, Prevent Child Abuse Florida, one of the Florida Department of Children and Families programs will be engaging communities throughout the state in a coordinated effort to promote positive parenting practices and the types of concrete assistance our families need. And whereas Prevent Child Abuse Florida's valuable "Pen Wheels for Prevention" campaign reminds us of the happy childhood that all children deserve, and the important role each of us play to ensure that every Palm Coast child has an equal opportunity for healthy growth and development. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of this City of Palm Coast, Florida, that April, 2013, be officially designated Child Abuse Prevention Month. In our city, and endorse this vital program to educate parents and caregivers about physical, social, emotional, and educational initiatives that connect families with resources for healthy childhood. Date this day of April, 2013, City of Palm Coast, John Nettles, Mayor.
Congratulations.
Yes. Can you say something afterward?
For record, my name's Arnold Anderson. I'm the Deputy Administrator for Department of Children and Families, Circuit 7. I'm a proud member and advocate for children, and I am a Palm Coast resident. So although I cover Circuit 7, I live here in Palm Coast, and I'm proud to live here. Child abuse prevention, I've been doing that for 26 years throughout all different states, and what I recognize is that no state is different than the next. It's just a matter of educating and getting out there, and we have a lot of wonderful services here in Flagler County and in Palm Coast itself that it's my job to really get out there and really talk to the people. So by all means, if you ever see me out in the street, come get me. If you have any questions, you need me to talk, speak to people, speak to the schools, anything, that's what I'm here to do. That's my job to do so, and that's my passion. So thank you very much for proclamation. Oh, this is my son, Alex. This is my boy, Alex, if you couldn't tell. And where do you go to school, Alex?
Lord Kings Elementary.
Very good. Very good. So he's dressed, ready to go to basketball practice, which you have to go to in a few minutes. So he's done all his schoolwork, and it's time to move on.
Move to recreation. Great. Thank you very much. Agenda item number four, second reading of an ordinance relating to the designation of Central Park and Town Center as a city civic center. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, author permitting Chapter 42, Sections 161, 162 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Coast. This provides for conflicts, severability, codification, and provides for effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landen?
Mayor, City Council, this is actually the second reading of this ordinance. You've seen the presentation a couple times. The key to this is it doesn't really change our venues, it doesn't change the experience of those people that participate. What this ordinance does is really follows the state laws and state criteria for cities that hold events, special events, that where alcohol is served. Currently, what we do is we have to contract with a private license holder, a liquor license holder, that has, for lack of a better term, a portable catering license. And there are none of those in Flagler County that we know of, so we actually have to go to places like Deland and as far away as Melbourne. What this does is something the state has set up to allow cities to contract with your local vendors. In this case, we have one that we're working with out of Flagler Beach that will still handle the entire setup. They will be responsible for the beer tent, the alcohol, but it will not be under a private license, it will be under the city's license. So we're able to contract with someone locally, and that also helps contribute revenue to the program. Jackie, our expert, I always refer to her as my favorite regulator, she's the one that actually issues liquor licenses for us, or not an issue of them, but approves them from the city's standpoint. Here to answer any questions, and at this point, we're recommending approval of this so we can move forward with Rockin' Rib Fest here in a couple weekends.
Council questions?
Your Honor...
Mr. McGuire.
If the council approves this ordinance, when will it take effect? Tomorrow?
Immediately upon passage and adoption.
So it'll be in time for the Rockin' Rib Fest.
As soon as we get the signature of the mayor.
Are the council questions? Mr. DiLorenzo.
Hi, Jackie.
Hi.
Will the vendor be purchasing the alcohol, or will the city be purchasing the alcohol?
The vendor will be purchasing the alcohol.
Okay.
We've made, if I could add to that, made it very clear that our city employees won't be handling it, we won't be carrying in city trucks. It's just who we contract with. We will be contracting with a different, a local vendor, and they'll be handling all of it.
One other question. The process that people use now when they're renting Central Park or using Central Park, and when you approve their, if they're using their own liquor license or an outside liquor license, will that process be changing under this, or will that be staying the same?
It'll be staying the same. It won't be changing.
Okay.
Are the council questions? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'll close the public portion meeting for that item. Come back to City Council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Mayor Nettles?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes 4 to 1.
Thank you very much. We have one item on the consent agenda. Would anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda? All one item? For the benefit of the public, this is an annual resolution that the city has to pass authorizing so-called low-level flights for the East Flagler Mosquito Control District. It's an FAA regulation that the cities have to approve this, and we've done it every year since we've been a city. Anyone wish to remove it? Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Five, which is the single item on the consent agenda? Move and approve. Second. Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. I think we're on our way to a record. That is the end of our agenda. It's time for public participation. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on any item not on today's agenda, please approach the podium, give us your name, and limit your contribution to three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, those that work for Palm Coast and are residents of Palm Coast. I'm Norman Weiskopf, and as you can see, with a few other people that have the same thing to talk about, we want to discuss the dog park and discuss the little friends that we represent, all the different dogs. We seem to have a problem over there, that the dog park is falling into disarray, and I just want to mention that we like the dog park. The dog park is great for our dogs and for us, too. But it's still not up to par. It could be a nicer place than what we have today. So we think we should look into sodding it. It's not a million-dollar project. It would only cost probably a few thousand dollars, which is a lot less than most other projects that we do. And it should be sprayed for ticks and lice and fleas and all the other things that dogs contact, you know, on a regular basis. So that's why we're here. It's been a long time that our dog park has been looking the way it does, and it just, it's not as good as it can be. It can be a lot better. And when it's bad, and it can be made better, it should be made better. So that's the way we feel about it. So we're here to ask you to do something to our dog park. And by the way, the dog park can, we get hundreds, if not thousands, of people a week that visit the dog park, which is probably more than any other part of the dog park. So it's an active part of Holland Park. It should have a separate name, in fact, but nonetheless, it's still Holland Park. But anyway, we think somebody should start looking into sodding it, not next year, when there's a new budget or anything like that, but right away. And somebody should start looking into spraying it, you know, get those bugs out of there so we have a healthier dog park also. That's basically all I have to say. I don't know if...
I just want to say that...
Give us your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Wendy Roth, and I recently moved here from Pennsylvania. I used to own a home in St. Augustine on Anastasia Island, and I actually sold that home because it wasn't a home that was, it wasn't a place that was very dog-friendly. And I was fortunate enough to find a realtor that steered me towards Palm Coast as a dog-friendly community. And when I first moved here, it was a very dog-friendly community. There's some beautiful parks here where I found, I can walk my dog on a leash, there's beautiful trees and waterways and wonderful places to walk. And she told me that there was a dog park, and it is a very nice place where I met wonderful friends. And my dog, Muddy, has met wonderful friends also. But I can't go there anymore because it's so dusty that my asthma acts up. Go over there and sit for a few days when there's 20 dogs having fun playing. You can't breathe. There's a children's park. All the furniture, all the elements were moved just a month ago, and if you sit there on a windy day, all the dust blows right over into the children's park. I don't think that's healthy for them either. It's not healthy for our dogs, it's not healthy for the people. This gentleman right here, we've elected him our secretary. This is our mayor. This man right here has a database with 450 dogs in it, with all of the owners and their names. That's how many people go to this park and how many dogs show up. I moved to this community because it's a dog-friendly community. You want to attract people to Palm Coast? Fix the park. Advertise it as a dog-friendly place. Because it can be. It's got potential, but you're not using it. It's already kind of there, and it won't cost much to fix it. I didn't move to Armond Beach because they don't like dogs, and I moved from St. Augustine. Yeah, they got a history, but they don't like dogs. Do you know there's beachfront properties down there that don't rent because they don't allow dogs? The ones that have allowed dogs, they rent. So think about it. Doesn't cost that much. A little sod, a little spray.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm Jimmy Epps. I'm also a dog park person, and I've been coming to Holland Park for approximately eight years, sitting in the park one to two days every day of the week that I'm in Palm Coast. And I sit there and I watch the parks, the soccer fields being fixed, sodded, cut. I watch the softball, the baseball fields. I look at the tennis courts with the nice lights, the bocce people over there on their bocce boards, bocce courts. They have seats with roofs on them. It gets hot in the afternoon. I guess what I want to say is, I sit and watch all this, and I don't see anything happening in a dog park. I do thank you for the handicap walk in the second gate you cut down at the bottom. That was very nice, except for the walk has about an eight-to-10-inch drop off the sidewalk to the dirt. We have a lot of senior people that have trouble walking. I think that's the issue that ought to be addressed. We thank you so much for the water. Water is, it's mandatory for our dogs in the summer, even in the winter, but also up at the top, we have a fountain that's never worked in eight years. I don't know if you call water dripping out working, but it just doesn't work. And by the way, I'd like to thank you for taking the two-by-four pine stump out that was there for almost three years. Pine stump. I mean, this was about this high. But I like the rest of the people up here. We think we have a nice park, we have a good chance to do something with it. And by the way, I'm not sure about this, but I would say, I think we're the only group that's raised over $1,000 two times in a row and put the money back in this park. I don't know if your bocce people have, your softball, tennis people, I don't know if they get together and do this, but we've done this. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, to tell you the truth. I mean, it seems ever since we've done something and tried to raise money that nothing's been done. So we'd like for your help, and we'd like for you to know that we're getting together, we are one, and we're going to keep at this. And we love you. We love all you. We'd love you more if we had some grass. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Bruce Hare, and I'm a, my wife and I were seasonal residents. She's down here for about six months, and I fly back and forth. I happen to be on our council, and so I appreciate being able to come to a council meeting without having to wear a suit. So, but one of the reasons we bought down here was because this was a dog-friendly community, and we wanted a place for the dog park, and, you know, Palm Coast, we didn't go see it, but, you know, we were looking mainly at what we could buy, but we were rather disappointed when we came to the park and, you know, saw the dust. Surely it needs some grass. And I know in our council, you know, you set your budget and you don't have a lot of room to move, but on some, on some of the smaller items, we can get them done. And we would ask that this be done, and I hope when I come back in the fall, it's, I'm coming back to some grass. I know our German Shepherd would love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, I don't know if you have a plan of the dog park? I can leave this with you if you'd like.
Mr. Landen, do we have that?
The dog park plan, layout?
I do not know if my staff has it or not.
Why don't you leave it with us? We can make a copy if you need that back.
Well, I have a duplicate, so I'll just leave one with you. And the other thing I just wanted to leave was, one of the ladies that come in the afternoon to the dog park gave me this, and this is a company that makes something better than sod. It's probably a little bit more expensive. I don't know too much about it, but I thought you might want to take a look at this also. But, so I'll leave this with you.
Leave it with the city clerk. She'll make copies for all of us.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we hope you can get on this subject real quick because we need, we need a good dog park. Thank you. Any questions from anybody here?
Actually, I do have one question. There are a lot of issues with Holland Park, being an old park, being on a hillside, insufficient water, the problem with sod is then you have to irrigate it. There are a lot of issues. How important is the dog park being at Holland Park versus being somewhere else? I don't even know if there's another possibility, but I'm just thinking if there was a place that would be easier to us to maintain? Or are you mostly Florida Park residents?
I haven't entertained the dog park anywhere else. I've been coming, I'm a resident here since 2002, and I've always come to this dog park in Holland Park, and it's something to look at. We haven't ever thought of any other place except this place here.
And I don't, I'm not suggesting there even is another place, but I'm just...
Right. I couldn't tell you, really. We've never thought of any other place.
Well, your secretary has those 400 dog names, so if necessary, we can do a survey.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Actually, we'd have to survey the owners, not the dogs, but the end results are about the same.
My dog would answer you.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. Several years ago, when Mr. King was in the Senate, I went to a commission meeting. It was a night meeting. And when I got to 100 in Beltwood Park, I had a little trouble making a left turn. So I asked the commission if they could put a new light up, or if they could put a marker to show where you turned. And I was told that they couldn't do anything because it was a state road, and you had to get permission from the state. Well, Senator King came, had his yearly talk, and I explained my problem to him, and a week later, we had the curve. Now, my question is, if 100 is a state road, how could you monitor it with a red light camera?
We'll get you an answer.
Hi, I'm Ruby Park. I live in Fleming Court. The first question I have, in the city that, when grass grows two inches higher than it's supposed to be, they give us... it's supposed to be, they give us notice. Why we don't have ordinance against the hedges that they are twenty feet up? That's the first question. And I would love to see that ordinance to be put in the book if, if we don't have it. The city told me they don't have it, and I don't know why.
Are you, you're both presenting the same issue?
We're gonna speak on the same issue. My name's Sandra Reynolds. I was under the impression that you were gonna be addressing the red light, the, the red light cameras this evening. Did I read that in the wrong newspaper in another city? No, is it gonna be coming up?
No, ma'am, not, not to the best of my knowledge.
Okay, so, do you want me to do this?
Yeah, I, I mentioned, I had a, I spoke with city manager last time about the lights. We cannot, we came to Palm Coast to be relaxed. Every driver that I talked to, and I talked to a lot of people, they are driving in Palm Coast nervously. We're gonna cause more trouble. If it's just them making money, we're not agreeing with that. If it's safety of the public, I think we should put the number on those lights. People should be getting ready to stop. If it's nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, I would know, okay, I have to slow down and stop. When I'm driving, I don't know middle of the light. Is it gonna be yellow? Do I have to brake and the guy behind me just hit me? Or I have to pass and get the ticket? I don't think we came to Palm Coast for that. We had it in New York already.
Okay, I'm gonna follow up. I did a little research and I, my objection to the red light cameras is that they are, what am I studies, that are not constitutional. When you receive a ticket from the city, there, you have no, no one, no accuser to face. If you, if you get it in the mail, you have three or four residents in the home, and you can see the picture of the car at the intersection. You don't know who's in the car. You cannot write a ticket for an automobile. Okay? He's not positively identified, and we, the person has no recourse, which the Sixth Amendment gives us the right to confront our accuser. So, that is my problem. Um, it's the, well, I haven't liked that in a, for a long while, but now it's bothering me a little bit more. I've done a lot of research that cameras do not prevent most intersection accidents. And I spoke with Sheriff the other night, and I said, if you're so concerned about those being such dangerous intersections, why don't we have a deputy at these intersections? Why do we have a deputy hiding in the woods on Old Kings Road? An old grand swamp.
Fluid department.
Where, and there's never an accident on Cold, or Cold Kings Road North, because it's a straight run. Granted, you got a drunk, drop from fifty to thirty-five, but people live here know that, so you can slow down a little bit. There's several issues here. I've actually pulled things off the ACLU. They do not make us safer. It is basically about revenue. Although, the city, I don't believe, is getting rich. I think it's the camera companies. So, and there's a lot, we, there are several cities actually starting to remove them from their cities, because they realize it has caused more problems than it solved. So, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Will you, will be brought up, will be put on the agenda for another?
That depends entirely on city council.
Okay.
We'll try to get some answers to some of your questions, though.
Okay. My first question.
I'm sorry.
I didn't get no response. Am I gonna live with twenty feet hedges next to me, or is it gonna be something?
We'll get an answer to your question.
I'm sorry?
We will get an answer to your question.
Thank you.
We take all the public comment, and then we deal with it in.
Please don't ignore me, I don't go away.
John, our building our section, Palm Coast. Once again, I stand with these people out here in support of the Constitution of the United States of America. It states that nine states in these United States, the Supreme Courts have already ruled that the red light cameras are unconstitutional. That's the Supreme Courts of nine states. A panel of judges over in Tampa have said they're unconstitutional. A panel of judges down in, in Miami Dade has said, and you can go online and look, read the hundreds of names of the judges independently, who have said they're all unconstitutional. They are unconstitutional, and we, as a city and a city council, just ignore the Constitution. It means absolutely nothing. There's dollars and cents being in there. These ladies said exactly right. Exactly right, and they stated it. I stand against them. I stand against red lights. Everybody I talked to stands against the red light cameras. I haven't talked to a single soul who likes them, except one guy at one city council meeting, said, if you don't like them, move. Wonderful, wonderful. That's the attitude of the city council here. Get rid of that, red lights, turn them off. They are unconstitutional. They have been ruled unconstitutional.
Thank you.
Hello, distinguished gentlemen. My name's Raul Troche.
Why don't you tip that microphone up a little bit, sir? Thank you.
Raul Troche, and right now I have a, a few problems. Especially with this building department here. First off, I would like to give you a definition here from Webster's. Kangaroo court. A mock court in which principles of law and justice are disregarded or perverted. A judgment or punishment given outside of legal procedure. I was taken to an administrative hearing that they have for the building department here. Two minutes before going on the stand, this is what they give me. Now, they told me that I could present witnesses, of which I took three. Yet when I showed up, they told me I could have no witnesses. You stand at a podium like this with all these people up here to ask you questions, and two people way off, out of your peripheral vision, who, every time I try to speak, they say, oh, that's hearsay. Oh, we don't want to hear this. Oh, we don't want to hear that. It's a kangaroo court. And I think that situation seriously needs to be addressed in this city. Secondly, they busted me in this sting operation recently. And I still contend that I did absolutely nothing wrong there, but you are guilty until proven innocent. And now, as a result of that, I cannot work. I have all these contracts with all these people, and I cannot work. You know, boy, that'll really drive a crime rate up. Now, I'm not gonna go commit crimes. The only crime I would probably commit as a result of this is if I run out of food, or absolutely have to pay my bills, then I'm gonna go to work illegally. Okay? Now, I think that is seriously wrong. Another thing is here, is Sheriff Manfree's press release over this sting operation. And some of the things that he said here, the individuals of this sting, now, I'm an honorable man. Y'all don't know me. Not, only a few here do. The individuals caught in this sting operation prey on residents of our county, taking money out of the pockets of hard-working business owners. Then he goes on to say, many of these phony contractors have prior criminal records and are people you really don't want inside your house or around your family. Boy, I don't think I've ever been so offended in my life, especially when that's his press release to the newspapers. And then he goes on to make some other seriously bad comments. And I wrote a response, which I've taken to a paper, and nothing's come about from yet. I wish it would. And I would just like to read that here to you.
Sir, you've got fifteen seconds.
Then that's all I have to say right now, but I would like to present this.
Why don't you, why don't you leave your comments, your written comments with the city clerk?
I would like to leave this.
Please.
Who's, that we can look at them.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting and come back to council. Mr. Landon, four hundred and twenty-eight dogs. We talked about the dog park in the past. The gentleman who is on the council understands the budgeting, and where there's no money, there's no money. But let's take another look at that issue. Let's see. Part of the problem is you're on a hill with no irrigation. I'm wondering, is there some flatter place in town that?
Yeah, actually, I can give you an update on, on both of those. First of all, our main problem with the, the dog park and the grass is that we can't get the grass to grow because we don't have water. The, the water that we do have is well water that is high in salt and doesn't work with, to, to keep the grass growing and the trees in the shade. So we've tried, and that's the, the major problem with keeping the grass growing. But with that said, we do have, as part of our master reuse line expansion, Holland Park is actually on our list of projects to do, and that is actually scheduled to happen this summer. And, and once we get reuse there, then setting, or putting down Baja probably would make some good sense. And I'm hoping I continue to get the nod from Mr. Adams. And I think that's really what the game plan is, but we've got to get the reuse line there first. And that is, that is actually in the plans for, for this summer. A couple of other things, as for background, and the gentleman acknowledged this, that we've actually gone out and rehabbed this. We had like a re-grand opening about two or three years ago, and everybody was very pleased. But with, as mayor, you've described, with the hill slope and the lack of water and the shade trees, it is a, a difficult situation to maintain at a, a level that's acceptable. Because I think we all agree with the, the people who spoke, it's, it's not an acceptable situation. We actually have all of Holland Park, or most of Holland Park, in our plans for rehab. Now, that, that's where you're talking the major dollars, and, and those dollars, it used to be in the budget, but with the cutbacks, it's not in the budget now. So that's why we're trying to do this more interim approach. It's more of a, a less costly approach to, to bring it up to better standards without spending money that we're just gonna waste. If we go out and plant grass right now, it, it would just die also. So we're trying to make sure that we don't, we don't spend those dollars without wasting. And we don't spend a huge amount of dollars in the interim before we rehab the whole thing, because whatever we do will, will come out as a result of the overall master plan for upgrades to Holland Park. The other thing is, is we actually have on the drawing boards a second dog park in Palm Coast already. It's another one of those, the kind of project that got started and put on hold, but, and that is what we affectionately refer to as the FPL easement. It is the easement, FPL high-wire easement that's between Lehigh Trail and our fire station on Beltair. It's that, what people use as a trailhead. And so the idea is to actually put a, a true trailhead there with a parking lot, a restroom, and then dog park, maybe a community garden at that location. Now, that's on more the southern end of, of the community, but that's where, as far as long-term plans, our parks, master plan calls for the additional dog park. Once again, that is, excuse me, that, that project is, you know, not going anywhere fast either because of, of funding. So, that's kind of the update. I think the, the key to it is, is getting reuse there. Reuse then can be used to maintain the, the grass, and the grass can stay. If we plant grass now, it will just die, and then we'll have to do this all over again in a couple of months.
One of the speakers with relation to the dog park talked about what sounds to me a dangerous situation, if you've got a sidewalk with a ten-inch drop-off. I think we need to look at that right away.
That, that is, goes without saying, yes, we will. I've got that in my notes, that we need to take a look at that immediately.
Okay. Then we had the issue of hedge height. I don't know what the land development code has in it. I don't see, is Mr. Abreu here? No.
Yes.
Is he? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not, not familiar with this issue at all.
Not either, but maybe Nestor can give us a, some insight?
Good evening. Mayor, not exactly sure I've seen where the height of the hedges is controlled by code. I'll, I've just talked a little bit briefly with a citizen. I'll talk to her, get the address. And the code does talk about conditions and maintenance of hedges, but, so we'll, we'll talk to her, get some more information and see what we.
Look, if you meet with her and find out what the real, what the issue is?
Right.
Thank you. Then we had a whole series of discussions about red light cameras. Obviously, this is a very emotionally charged issue. I will take exception with a couple of comments. The most recent report from the Florida Department of Transportation shows that where there are red light cameras, there are reduced numbers of intersection accidents. So, I have to use their statistics. They're the experts. As far as the constitutionality, Mr. Reichman, would you be so kind as to look into the issue and see if in fact?
Well, I, I can tell you that, that there have been a lot of challenges to the constitutionality of the Mark Wendell Act in the circuit courts and county courts throughout the state of Florida. And there may be several circumstances, as the gentleman indicated, where there have been a finding by, by a judge, that, that, and, and I certainly am not aware of the, do not have access to the cases he's, he's referencing. But I can also tell you that there is neither a Florida Supreme Court case, nor any court decisions out of the district courts of appeal, nor any circuit courts or county courts governing Flagler County and Palm Coast that have found the Mark Wendell Act, which is a state law, unconstitutional, for any of the grounds that we've heard this evening. And indeed, I am familiar with a series of, of, of court decisions from other county and circuit courts that have specifically found that these arguments do not make this law unconstitutional. So certainly, I, I, I would not sit here and say that there are not other court decisions throughout the United States that have found that laws like the Mark Wendell Act do have constitutional infirmities, but that is not the law in the state of Florida. And when it becomes the law in the state of Florida, you're, you're, the company that works with the city of Palm Coast, and with the ATS, which works with a lot of other cities in the Palm Coast, as, as well as the city of Palm Coast, and those cities, will take steps to make sure that either our system is changed, or that we eliminate our system so that it is, so that any system that we have is constitutional. But at this time, there's nothing in Florida law that, that, that makes the, the system of red light cameras that are employed in this city unconstitutional.
Your honor, if I may, the, the issue of red light cameras is before the state legislature, even as we speak.
Yes, sir.
And if the state legislature rules that they are illegal, they'll be gone.
That is correct.
Well, they don't even have to rule them illegal. What they're talking about is simply revoking the Mark Wendell Act. So, the legality is not even the issue.
Correct.
Is the state of Florida gonna, going to rescind the rights of local government to use them?
And, mayor, exactly.
It's on the table at this time.
Exactly. There, let's, let's not mix apples and oranges. There's, there's constitutionality of an existing law, which the courts will determine, versus policy that comes out of the legislature. And, and, and I was addressing, mayor, obviously, the, the constitutional arguments that come from the court system. And the legislature, in its infinite wisdom, can choose to do whatever it wants to do. And, and, and as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, there, there are some bills pending, certainly have not passed yet. There are some bills pending that will impact, if they are passed, the Mark Wendell Act. And of course, our contract with ATS provides for that. And to the extent that, that the law has changed, so will the, the system of red light cameras in the city of Palm Coast.
Okay. The, the last speaker, I'm not sure what building department court he was involved in.
It is, it is actually a county.
Was it county?
It's a county board of. It's a county board of contractors.
Contractors licensing board.
And the issue, of course, is that they did a sting, as I understand it, to find contractors working without the proper licensure.
Correct.
And I think we've made it very clear that we support using licensed contractors. It doesn't mean that an unlicensed contractor is immoral, unethical, untrustworthy. None of those comments necessarily go with it, but it simply is a violation of state statute or county ordinance that requires certain licenses for certain -- do you have any further insight?
I would just add that agreeing with you and saying that it's important for licensed and licensed, unlicensed individuals to work within their scope that they're allowed to under state law. And if you work outside of your scope, then you're afoul of the law. And that's, I think that's what they were trying to curtail, was contractors working outside of their scope, what, outside of what the law allows them to for what license they hold.
Could you answer my question, Mayor?
Mayor, I...
What was your question, Mr.?
Mayor, I can actually answer if you'd like. Jack's question was, with State Road 100 being a state highway, how can the city have the red light cameras on State Road 100? Because the state, it's a state law, and the state law specifically says that they can be located on state highways, provided the Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, approves them, then they are allowed to be placed on state highways. They do have to be approved by FDOT in order for them to be located there. And all the ones on State Road 100 have been approved and have the permits from FDOT.
Okay. I think that covers all of the public comments. Next on the agenda, discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. Ferguson, why don't we start with you?
No further comments.
Mr. DiLorenzo. Mr. Lewis.
Yes. I was approached just recently by some citizens dealing with another question on State Road 100. There's a traffic light in front of the hospital on State Road 100, and there is no left-turn signal to allow people who are going east and turning into the hospital the opportunity to turn unless they are in competition with the oncoming traffic. So, I'm just bringing that forward to see what the city can do about that, because we're, not yet, but we're bound to have some anxious citizen who cannot wait for the traffic and will be clobbered. So, I'm putting that out for whatever we can do about that.
He's found on 100 wanting to make a left-hand turn across oncoming traffic into the hospital.
You've got a green light, but you don't have a left-turn arrow.
No left turn arrow.
It's interesting. I just talked to another staff member about 5:00 this evening about a dedicated, a dedicated right doing more of a yield than having to stop. So, we'll add those two together and go to the state and ask them to take a look at maybe making those type of improvements into the hospital. You know, once again, with it being a state highway, you know, it has to be approved by FDOT, but we can pass on that request. I'm a, I guess I don't do it that often. I'm amazed there's not a left arrow on...
I am too, but I did take the run over there, and there's no left turn arrow.
Okay, we will...
And it's serious, because I know the hospital needs business, but that's a terrible way to get business.
Bad bill, bad. Is that it? Mr. McGuire?
I can't top that.
I have nothing. Discussion by city attorney of anything, not on the agenda.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by the city manager of matters, not on the agenda.
A couple of things. One of them for future, and a couple of positive things that we've had happen. Obviously, is it 12th and 13th? It's not this coming weekend, but the following weekend is Rockin' Rib Fest. And, you know, I expect great weather again this year and great activities, and they're doing a little something different. Going to have a little bit of country along with the rock and roll and barbecue, and it should be a good time out there. And the price this year is only $3 versus the $20 we've seen in the past. So, hopefully, we get a good turnout. Also, we released the announcement last week that, for us, was very exciting, those that are really seeing our sports activities and venues take off. We landed Just For Keepers as a Palm Coast being their USA headquarters, at least on a temporary basis. Just For Keepers is an international soccer goalkeeper training academy. It's in actually 18 countries, and they are very large in the soccer industry of training goalies for both the college and obviously professional levels. They are wanting to expand into the U.S. market and are going to start this year, the summer, regional camps, their week-long camps. Their southern camp, southeast camp, will be here in Palm Coast. And then they conclude it with a national camp in July, where that also will happen in Palm Coast. And then the top players will be invited to England, which is where the company is based out of, to attend the Just For Keepers facilities there in England. But this is more than just soccer, because they actually are, the owner, Mr. Newland, is going to move his family here, here this spring, summer, and to start hopefully his long-term venture here in the U.S. and use Palm Coast as headquarters. So, this is actually a business venture. The company also has their own brand of soccer goalie equipment. You don't think of a goalie having equipment, but they have gloves, and they have padded pants and other things. And so, we are working with them to have Palm Coast to get tied into that part of the business, whether it's distribution, manufacturing, et cetera. So, we're hoping this will grow into jobs. The owner is planning to move here for three months, this spring, summer, see how it goes. And hopefully, while he's here, we entice him to move here permanently and keep the operation going. This will bring recognition to Palm Coast and bring in a lot of more soccer players at a whole different level. We're actually working with another international company and a U.S. company to also bring their soccer programs here. So, it just keeps, you know, once you get that reputation and once they come out and see our fields, they all say, "Yeah, wow, this is a great place." So, we're really building momentum here. And it's all about those tourist dollars. It's all about those family dollars that come in, recirculate here. And we're really talking hundreds of thousands and the millions of dollars now just with soccer and lacrosse every year, just because we built four additional fields. The return on that investment has just been huge.
Quick question. And I think in your press release or something, you gave accolades to the tourist board and the county economic development. What did they do in terms of to receive these accolades that Palm Coast didn't do in itself?
You know, let's start with even the private individuals who helped make this happen. You know, we have Rich Weber and Reggie Monsanto, who is part of our, I call it PC United, but it's actually FC United, soccer club here in Palm Coast. They had the connections. They met Mr. Newland and knew that he was scouting different locations. He spent some time down in South Florida. He spent some time in Orlando, Daytona Beach. And they invited him to come to Palm Coast and take a look at Palm Coast after he went to the larger cities. And when Mr. Weber was able to convince him to visit here, then we put the team, just like we would with any business prospect. And we brought in Georgia Turner at the TDC and Helga Van Eckert at the county. The mayor joined us. Obviously, we had city staff there. I'm trying to think of, was there, who else was at the table? But everybody that brings something and says, "Okay, yes, we have the hotels. Yes, we can find you a home for your business once you get here, and we'll start working on that." And we put together a presentation. So, it wasn't just about soccer. It was about selling the opportunities here in Palm Coast. And we brought in, basically, what I referred to as that A-team, where it's all working together to show that we're willing to do whatever you need to do. And immediately, for example, Georgia Turner starts working with hotels and getting proposals because this is what we call residential camp. These soccer students, if you will, will have to stay somewhere for a whole week. Well, we don't have a dorm for them, so we have to work with one of our hotels. And immediately getting proposals, not just for the rooms, but the foods, et cetera. And then Ms. Van Eckert helped us show them around with some business prospects. It's maybe where an office could go, maybe where, you know, if he became a distribution center or even manufacturing here, some of the opportunities there. So, we did the full gamut, because this is not just about soccer. This is about really a business, and it just happens to be a sports business.
If I may... I can just piggyback on that. I was at that meeting, and I think the importance of the TDC and the county's economic development, not that they did anything, they were there to support us. We always hear talk about, "Oh, the county, the city." No, no, this is a united front, working together to the benefit of us all. So, it's just a very positive emotional experience. I think that's really what they did.
And the private clubs?
And the clubs, of course.
If I may, piggyback on your piggyback, the TDC is in a process of making a video, and they will use some of our videos that came out of the city of Palm Coast to promote not just Palm Coast, but Flagler County as a tourist attraction. And it's, I've seen some of the ideas behind it that Georgia Turner and her staff are putting together for it. It's very impressive. And the thing of it is, is that she goes out all over the United States and Canada and sells Palm Coast as a place to have your soccer tournament or your lacrosse tournament or maybe someday hockey, who knows? But, but no, there's a budget for advertising. The TDC helps support advertising and does the things that helps bring these people to Palm Coast. And then she and her staff report back to the TDC on what kind of comments were received from people that do come and have a soccer tournament or flag football or something like that for the first time. How was it received? And of course, the TDC also keeps records of the occupancy rate of the local hotels and places like that, because, you know, people that come in here obviously bring money with them to spend. And the last stat I saw was, I believe it was the month of January, might have been February, that the occupancy rate was up 25% over the same time last year. And that's for people coming in here for athletic events.
Right. And then if I could piggyback on top of the piggyback, on top of what, how many, no, yeah, but this is how, this is how that teamwork works. Luann and Cindy and Jason, Tom, our video crew, worked with them on putting together these for our facilities, and we have some real talented expertise in that area and work. And because it's all about promoting. You know, I'm going to go on with the new horseshoe courts of, you know, that's something they can promote now. You mentioned flag football. And what's interesting is, is that we read more and more articles about other people really starting to realize how much new money this generates and brings into the community. But we are going to join them on one of the visits. We're promoting that Luann is going to join one of the staff members at TDC to go out and promote this, because we've learned that it's a tight network. And once you get into that network, it really starts taking off, and we've been quite successful, yes. So, and, you know, any of those of you that have had kids that you go, you know, the typical soccer mom, go to, you know, travel. It's amazing how much money we all spend doing that, and we're finding that more and more they're spending it right here in Palm Coast, Flagler County. That's all I had.
Thank you. I'm going to grant myself privilege, and I'm going to go back, because there was one comment that I did want to make. Council members, we've already had presentations on the city's annual financial report. We've had PowerPoint. We've had all kinds of, Chris, I hate to say it, but boring data. But I hope, I hope, council, you've all had an opportunity to look at the document that's up in the city council office. Chris should have stand up and take a bow. That is probably one of the finest presentations that I've ever seen. It's actually readable. It actually makes this stuff a little more understandable for those of us that don't understand it fully. So, just really, kudos, really good job. Keep up the good work. You ought to get an award on top of it. If we can have a piggyback on a piggyback, you ought to get an award on top of an award for that one, because that's really outstanding.
Mayor, actually, it's the staff that did it all. I don't want Chris to get a big head. It's all his staff.
All right. With all that being said, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to say Mr. Quinn has a great-looking tie on tonight. And I move to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.